Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 22nd, 2020 City Council Workshop. This session will be conducted remotely and members will only be participating electronically. And this meeting can be viewed online at www.louisstonmaine.gov/2020cc. And with that, I'll open the workshop, which is in reference to the combined sewer master plan, five-year update. And Dale, I think you're bringing somebody in. If you could just introduce someone's there here and take it away.
She's on his way. Jeff, I assume you don't have video this evening. Is that correct? Oh, there he is. Jeff Bowles, our city engineer, and he'll be assisting me in the presentation this evening. He's been involved with this for quite a number of years, so certainly more, more in tune with it than I am.
Thank you.
Ready, Mayor?
All set.
All right. Sharing my screen. So, the presentation tonight is on our Clean Water Act master plan. This is the fifth installment, the fourth update of that plan. The first plan was issued in, in 2000, which resulted in our discharge, C-MON discharge clean water permit. We've been in negotiations for almost two years with DEP. And the results of those, those negotiations, we want to talk to you about before we submit our final plan. And then again, it's a plan will result in a permit, but that plan can alter as, as we move forward. The Clean Water Act requires cities, towns, and pretty much any entity to eliminate combined sewer overflows. And I think you all know, but for the public, combined sewer overflows are older sewers that collect both stormwater and regular sewage. Those, the overflow portion of those is, is when you have a heavy rain and you have combined both sewer and waste in a sewer system that's headed for the treatment plant. But then you have a heavy rain and the stormwater overwhelms the, the system and causes the system to overflow into surface water bodies. As you might imagine, that was at the turn of the century, all sewers were that way. Since treatment plants, the vast, all waste is directed to the treatment plant. But in some older parts of cities, there's, in towns, there are places where those haven't been separated into two separate entities. And that's really what we're talking about tonight are places in the city, especially in our older city, where there are both sewage and stormwater contained in the same pipe headed for the treatment plant. Separating, separating these systems eliminates just charges of waste to surface water bodies. So, most of it or all of it heads for the Andes Coggin here. Everybody that's lived in Lewiston for a number of years or been in Central Maine, as, as I have, certainly has seen that improvement and part of that improvement is Lewiston's CSO separation amongst a lot of other entities. The Clean Water Act prohibits waste, however, has provisions that regulators can work with us over time to separate those sewer systems. That's what we're talking about today. I talked at the very beginning about a 20-year plan. We've progressively been working towards those and I'll show you some of that work in a moment. And certainly Jeff can fill you in on some of it. So, we've definitely been working towards those and in five-year increments with DEP. DEP, in this case, as I was telling the mayor just before the meeting, is really working on EPA's behalf. There's delegated authority to DEP. So, when I say DEP, I mean DEP and EPA. It's together. We just negotiate directly with DEP on EPA's behalf. We plan improvement, a permit in five-year increments, which kind of aligns with development of our LCIP. And if you looked at any of the LCIPs in the last number of years, you would see separation and storage projects planned out over the next five years and then adjusted as we get closer. Lewiston Auburn, even from, as long as I can remember, being involved in this sort of thing. I started out as a hydrogeologist in the environmental field. And I can remember Lewiston Auburn over the last 20 years really being somewhat aggressive. There's a couple of other communities in Maine and other, there's some other communities in Maine that really haven't been as aggressive as we have. So, we've done a great job. So, over the last 20 years, Lewiston alone. And when we, when we put our plan together, it's Lewiston Auburn and Lopka, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But Lewiston alone, over the last 20 years, has spent $36 million. And we'll talk about what that's achieved and, as we move forward. The city has reduced the CSO discharge from 80%, where almost all of the city were, were combined sewers or much of the city were combined sewers through the work of Jeff and the other engineering staff. We've actually reduced that by 80% over that 20 years. 96 of our combined sewers under, 96% have been separated. And as you might guess, those that, that were along highway projects and those that are in, some of the more easy to get out or had the larger benefit were the ones that were done first. In an older city like ours, when you get in the downtown area, those become fairly complicated fairly quickly. And what's remaining is much more difficult to get to than some of the originals. Several small storage tanks have been built. The, the idea of a storage tank, and that's really going to be a large theme of this. And these large storage tanks, what they do is when you have that rain flush event, it captures that combined sewer, both storm and, and sewage, holds it to some extent. And then when the storm passes, it's able to discharge it through the treatment plant to be treated instead of going directly overboard. So, that's the purpose of storage. We have three. If you have some questions about those, Jeff certainly can talk to you about those. We finished our most recent one about a year ago since I've been here. And they work quite well. Most of them are passive. They work on gravity. So, they, they work quite well and Jeff can speak to that if you'd like to in a few moments. Unfortunately, I got a repeated bulletin that I was supposed to remove. Kevin Gagney told me to remove it and I missed it. Sorry about that. We do, we also have installed a, an inspection program where we inspect our sewers. That's important because these combined sewers, if they're leaking groundwater or leaking surface water into them, that just exacerbates the problem. If they become clogged with sediment and over the last 20 years, we've moved over 100, 1,223 tons of sediment. That sediment debris, trees, all of those things that get into the sewers, clog them up and make them less efficient. Again, that causes them to back up and, and overflow and discharge and create other problems. So, we have a very aggressive schedule of, of both inspecting and repairing and removing debris. We moved our sewer outfall locations. I was going to put a map in, but it's just hard to see throughout the city. But when, when, when the city began this endeavor, there were 37 locations in the city during the storm events that would discharge waste into a surface water body. Those have now been reduced to eight and one of those eight is at, is actually at Lopka. And that'll be the focus of some of the discussion here at the end. You can see how we've progressed over the last 20 years. This is a graph showing CSO as opposed to precipitation over time. And as we, as you can see, Lewiston's in red there. Lewiston has, 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 has really made quite a bit of improvement overall. The overall system, we've made a lot of improvement. And I'm going to show you another graph in a minute, but if you look from kind of 2014 out to 2018, you'll notice that graph is flattening. That's a piece we're going to need to talk about in a minute. And that's why DEP is asking of us what they're asking, or at least one of the reasons. Similar graph showing-
Can I ask you a question, Dale?
Oh, please do.
On the previous graph, is it indicating that Auburn is, has, is that zero?
No, Auburn's not at zero, but it's, it's much closer to zero than, than we are. That, that, that graph isn't at zero. We'll talk about that some more in a little bit. And that's their CSO discharge. That's not necessarily, so if you look on there, see Lopka's the brown line? So, one thing about Lewiston, and that's a great point, actually, Alicia, Council Ray, is that-
Can I interrupt you real quick, just for the colorblind guy?
Yeah.
The brown line, there, okay, all right. So, I thought, but just wanted to make sure.
So, I'm sorry. This is Lopka, this is Lewiston, this is Auburn, this is the entire system.
With the, the X, sort of?
Yeah, the X, the one on top.
The symbols are fantastic. I just, I wasn't, wasn't quite sure on the, on the Lopka one.
I should, I should, I should, I shouldn't do that that way. We should make them more symbols, yes.
No, the, the symbols, symbols are great. That, that was just the one that I wasn't sure.
So, so if you, if you look at our system and there's, so there's us, there's, there's Lewiston, there's Auburn and Lopka. So, let's, let's take Auburn, for instance, back to Council Ray's point. They have one, I believe, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but they have one CSO left within their city. So, inside their city, when they have a storm, there's one location typically that might overflow. I mean, if something bad happens, others might, but they're, they've limited down to one where it ate. But, but that is a CSO, that is a combined sewer overflow located within their city. In addition to that, they send a stream, obviously, across the river over to Lopka. And we send a stream over to Lopka. That stream also includes both stormwater and wastewater. And there's a CSO, it's called Structure B, located right on the Lopka property. So, it is a little bit misleading and that'll, that's a point we'll discuss in a few moments, that Auburn is so low because Auburn is still sending materials over for that Lopka, that brown diamond line right there. So, some of that is, that is them as well, not just, not just their line alone, okay? So, some goes overboard in their city, some comes over here, goes to Lopka and goes overboard with ours. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
It's hard to, I know it's, it's hard to, I have a hard time visualizing sometime, which will be the crux of something we'll talk about a little bit later. Just to kind of combine it with, combine ours with our CSO discharge, with our annual precipitation, just to kind of take into account a little bit of climate. Here are our annual discharge, our annual precipitation events, followed by our discharge in, in orange, the, the line compared to the columns. You'll notice we are, we're making a substantial improvement compared to the amount of water. And I would argue a little bit that these might be more intense events. I think we all anecdotally look out our windows and see rainstorm intensity events and durations, even though they're fairly short, they're very intense, that we might not remember back 10 or 15 years ago. So, to me, that even shows that we're making a greater, even a greater progress than maybe even the scratch shells. Because I think we are having those short-term, very intense events which cause CSO discharges. Okay? Looking forward, much of the remaining areas that are separated are in densely and populated congested areas. We, we talked about that a moment ago. You obviously, over the first 20 years, we've really gone in and tried to get the place we get the biggest bang for the buck, for that 36 million, right? In June 2019, the three entities submitted a master plan to, to, to DEP, kind of continuing along the same program we had before. And that's build mostly separate stormwater sewers throughout the city, continue that progress, and build some small storage where appropriate. We submitted that to them back in June 2019. Later that year, and, and at that meeting, we actually presented it in a meeting and sat down with them. We all seemed to be in agreement at that time that we'd progress. And you know, if you looked at our LCIP, that's what's in the LCIP, that kind of, of a continued effort, effort. This plan was really focused on 2021 through 2026, the next five years. The NDP wrote back to us and said they were looking for a more aggressive, aggressive stance. They're really looking at, as I said, we're really trying to continue the same program, but it gets more and more difficult. They really want us to, to accelerate instead of continuing along the same plan. They were looking for a large storage device. We've talked about the storage devices we built before being fairly small. They're looking at a large storage device down near that Structure B at Lopka to really retain a, a large amount of that stormwater and then discharge it through the plant. That would capture both ours and Auburn's that comes across the river. That's a, that, although we've talked about that for a number of years, that really wasn't what we are proposing over the next five. Therefore, you haven't seen it in the LCIP. And we were hoping we'd be able to continue to reduce. Because the more we reduce the CSO discharges, the more, the smaller that tank and the lower the expense on the tank gets. And the tanks really has maintenance, a lot of other things. We'd much rather just separate them at the source. They also indicated that our design storm could change. That's, that's a big deal and that was, I think Jeff will remind me, but I think there were over 40 comments and that showed up in a good handful of them. That's important. We're trying to control, our goalpost for the last number of years has been the one-year storm. So, it's a storm that statistically occurs on a one-year basis. As you might imagine, a one-year storm is much smaller than a two-year storm or a 10-year storm, or you often hear a 50-year storm or 100-year storm. Our, our control devices and our designs have been built around and our plan, our five-year plans, have been really driven around that one-year storm. To bring that into question before we've kind of gotten to that goalpost was, was, was very concerning to us. That's probably more expensive than the tank in some ways, or what, what, more expensive than what we're going to talk about in a minute. So, that, that's definitely a concern. It's something we want to keep our eye on. We'll talk in a minute, but I think we've, we've averted that at this time. They indicated, they indicated that we could reduce the number of separation projects in the time that we plan and design and build the tank, that we could, they're really thinking about, let's get the, let's affect the trunk of the tree and stop trimming the, trimming the limbs. You know, our, our approach has always been upstream, trim the limbs, fix the problem at its source. Instead of that, it's at, at the discharge point there, refocusing us, refocusing us towards that discharge point. So, our proposal back to them, we went and met with them on a couple of occasions with our consultants, Lopka and Auburn, and tried to really tell them that we need another four or five years to stay the course. We'd like to continue to eliminate the upstream discharge so that we can, so that whatever tank we build, we build the right-sized tank, we design it, we find the right location for it, and that we can really maintain and reduce costs to the extent that we can. We met with them two times, that just, it was not going anywhere at all. And then later, earlier this summer, we kind of came to this tentative proposal and told them that we'd always have to run it by you, Lewiston Sewer District and, and the Lopka Board. And that's, that's where we are tonight. The plan would be that we leave the design storm alone at this point, stays at one year. That, that's, that's a big one. That both Lewiston and Auburn continue to do limited separation for the next three or four years. In our LCIP, we have some money going forward. We would continue to include about 1.5 million in new funding. I believe that's in there. I didn't get a chance to check tonight. But really, the big change is that we would be proposing to ask for three years to continue that reduction, to really better understand what a tank would look like, to further review self-flows, to assess apportionment between the two cities. Back to Alicia's question, that's somewhat, Council Ray's question, that's, that is a complicated, the way the hydrographs work and things, we, we need to look into that to some extent. We've actually asked Lopka to work with our engineering staff, myself and Sid and his engineering staff, to develop a proposal and come back with some proposals on how we would apportion the cost of a tank, both building and operating. And that would be, that would be over the next couple of years and whatever proposal would obviously come back to the council. We complete final design and we secure funding in those three or four years. That would be our proposal to DEP. They, again, they would like it much sooner than that, but we think they'll agree to that. Button, there we go. So, the proposal would that we wouldn't begin construction until 2024, probably late year, if at all, would probably really be through 2025, 2026, and maybe beyond. The size of the tank needs to be determined, but that could be anywhere between two and 2.3 million gallons at a cost of 15 to 20 million. There's always kind of new tank designs coming about. Jeff's been looking at a number of them. That's, that's kind of a, kind of a crude estimate this early, but, but that's kind of the ballpark, give you a sense of where we are. We need to submit our amended plan here coming up pretty soon. Remember, we submitted it last in 2019 and we've been negotiating since. We need a new permit issued in November of 2020. Just to give you a sense of what other communities are being asked to do, and please remember, Lewiston Auburn got out of the gate early and has, have really been the, you know, the tortoise and the hare. We've certainly been, been continual making improvements from the very beginning and doing it relatively aggressively. But Portland is currently building a 3.5 million gallon tank. I think if you go down on 295, you'll see it being constructed. That's at a cost of about $40 million. Bangor is constructing a 3.8 million gallon tank at the tune of $25 million. Augusta's building a tank. There's a lot of communities building tanks now or building tanks in the next couple of years. And again, that's probably some of the refocusing of both DEP and EPA. So, with that, I just, this is such a big item and it's such a big change from where we are. We wanted to sit down and just chat with you a little bit, give you this presentation and get some thoughts and ideas from you and answer any questions we can.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm not, not particularly. I think Dale covered everything pretty well. I'm welcome to answer any more detailed questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. So, if you could, Dale, so we have, we had 96% of our sewer separation has already been done. Is that what I, what I heard? So, if we were at 100%, would we need a tank?
We would not, would we? As long as, so there's a couple of things contributing now. And Jeff, please chime in because you, you know this a lot better than I do. One is our, our non-separated sewer. And then the other element is, is called IA. And it's really taps that are into our system or leaks in our system, but most of them are taps. And that's really what Auburn's fighting now. So, if we'd separate all of the mileage, there would still be roof drains, there would still be solid drains. And there would probably still be some leakage that would need to get through inspection and repairs. So, we'd be very close to 100%, but, but there would still be those kinds of things that were still infiltrating. Is that relatively accurate, Jeff?
Yeah, roof drains and sump pumps are a huge problem. So, have about 268 catch basins left in the system that we, that we know of. A lot of those are actually private in parking lots and areas that are hard for us to, to separate. So, and they're spread all over the city, so it's more expensive to do little projects everywhere. There's not a lot of areas that are grouped together that, that are easy to separate. So, what's left is, it's difficult and expensive either way you do it.
So, that remaining 4% would cost more than the 15 to 20 million that it would cost to build a tank?
Probably not that much, but I don't, I don't think, I think we would still need a tank just because of the infiltration from the groundwater and the, and the sump pumps and roof drains. And bless, we had a, a huge program to get into every building and, and run a separate pipe out to the street. And that, as you can imagine, that gets difficult.
Jeff, there are a number of places where that's not practical, right? There just isn't another drain, especially in a city as tight as ours. Some homeowners, and I don't know that I've been out with any of you, but previous council, I've certainly been out with, why can't my constituent or why, why shouldn't my constituent attach to the sewer? So, that's, that, there are places in the city where that's very impractical.
All right. Good. Thank you. Councilor Wright?
Thank you. And so, so we've expended 36 million so far. It sounds like our option going forward is to build a large tank at a large expense. I think that's fair to make that correlation here. So, compared to other communities that you referenced towards the end there, is that their only effort that they're undertaking? Or have they been doing smaller separation projects, but just not at the same pace?
They're still doing smaller and they still have individual, remember I said there are, we have eight in the city? So, there are eight in the city that don't go to Lopka. This is really capturing mostly the Lopka water. There's still water discharging. The city and many cities have, have a lot of CSO overflow still that they're going to be. So, the, the point of it is they're going to build a tank and they're going back in and doing separation in addition to that and continuing on with them. So, those communities are not done. And some of those tanks aren't their only tank either, especially Portland. You know, think about Portland, you know, the peninsula is really an island, right? So, water kind of runs off in each direction and Portland certainly has some challenges even above and beyond ours.
And this might be a little bit of an aside, but I went out with Dale and Jeff last year as they were preparing for a CSO separation. And I just wanted to, again, I hope I did it last year, but again, compliment the customer service. It was around some of our downtown businesses and parking was going to be disrupted. There was concern from business owners that their businesses might be disrupted for a couple of days. And Jeff and Dale did some really great work just to swage those concerns. So, I just hope that continues to carry forward as these projects are undertaken.
Councilor, that's a great point. Remember, I said it gets more and more difficult. You know, Middle Street was the location and that was getting more difficult. And that's not as difficult as it gets. It's going to get more and more difficult with some of these drains, underbuildings, in roadways that there just is so much utilities, you know. So, it's, it's not, it's, it's going to be disruptive to our population no matter what we do. That was a good testament to it.
Hey, Councilor Joy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dale, you mentioned the sewage going into the stormwater. How big mills within our city? How is that structured? Do they have the separation or are there some of those that you're talking about that you would not be able to separate?
Jeff, do you know about those?
Mill, in the downtown mills, is that what you said?
Yeah, about the mills, is that something, you talked about private and, and I believe those would be private, correct?
Right. Yeah, that's, that's definitely an area that, that remains a lot of combined in their parking lots and roof drains. Yep. Very difficult to get out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Some of our public buildings are those as well, some of our schools, some of the older schools.
Okay. Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions, but I guess just a couple of comments. Great presentation. I would definitely be supportive of the plan put forward. I think it makes sense for the city. And it's really it, but I guess lastly, residents of Lewiston should be proud of the city to know of all the great effort that's been taken over the last 20 years. So, I certainly am. So, thank you for that.
And if we build the, the CSO storage tank, do we still have to finish the remaining 4% of the separation?
We'll, we'll still have to get some of our, some of our CSOs in town will still not quite be at the one-year storm, particularly Jupson Brook area. So, we may, we're planning to do some separation there, which will help. And we'll see where we're at in a couple of years with it, but we may have to do a little bit more, especially in that area.
So, Mayor, this won't necessarily fix those, those other seven, right? This will capture the water that's coming down to that Structure B. And what Jeff's saying, we, we may not be able to have, we may not have to do all the ones that are feeding Structure B. We may be okay there as long as, as long as that goalpost doesn't change, that one-year storm. But some of those individual CSOs, we're still going to have to do some work on those. And that's regardless of whether we build a tank.
Okay. And you know, Dale shared this with me, but this has not been planned for. It's not, not capital improvement budget, correct?
That is true. Not the tank, no. The regular separation is.
Councilor Wright?
Thank you. I was just wondering, can you remind us, the Lopka Board who sits on that?
Right now, it's for Lewiston, it's Dennis and I. Will, we, when, at some point, we may transition one of those back to, it used to be Dennis and I before as the Deputy Administrator. it used to be Dennis and I before as the Deputy Administrator. When Mary Ann gets on board and her feet under, we'll figure that out. Auburn has two, there are two, two citizens, a citizen from each city and then one ad hoc, is that right Dennis?
Yes, that's correct.
And that switches back and forth each year or something or some term?
Yeah, every year, every couple of years. It's confusing, but yes, I have to keep looking. That was in that chart we gave you a little while ago with who serves where.
Great, thanks.
And do you know, are there grant funds available that could cover some of this cost?
Yes, yes, there are, yes, there are. And that's, that three-year period, we will be aggressive about those, both with, both federally and locally. Who, I'm not sure exactly what those will be at the time, but there are periodic ones and we will definitely be, be driving towards those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? So in summary, you know, we didn't hear from every counselor, but it just sounds like that we're all okay with at least moving in the direction that Dale has kind of started for us and Jeff. Alright, so I'm seeing lots of nods and thumbs.
We look, as we design and as we come back and as we evaluate those three years, we, we will be back with you at each move and making sure you understand. But also if we need to have a conversation and need some of your help with our regulatory family, we definitely will, will be back. So this is not, this is the beginning, not the end.
No, and I, and again, I'll encourage you that if we get too much pressure, considering Lewiston for twenty years has been way ahead of the, of other communities in the state to feel this pressure come upon us over a very short distance. One, I personally think it's unfair, but it's typical when it comes to some of the agencies that we're dealing with. But if they put too much pressure, I do believe that we should use some political push just to, you know, to keep it reasonable for our community. As it is right now, this amount of money being added to our bonding on such short notice. I can see Heather already, her, her brain is working on how she can make this work, so.
There are also some financial capacity things when we get closer, we may, we may need to take a look at too, given our demographics as you, as you pointed out earlier today.
Alright, thank you. Alright, just a final check, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you Jeff, thank you Dale. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the International Association of Firefighters, Local 785.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Jensen and Dennis, if you could call the role.
Counselor from Ward one?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward three?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward four?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward five?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward six?
Okay, somebody will have, somebody will have to check. I think he froze up or something and then he went offline. So if somebody could start calling him as we switch over to the executive session. Alright, with that, we'll adjourn the workshop and-
I need, hold on, Mayor, I still need Counselor from Ward seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now we have a complete vote.
Thank you. Alright, with that then, we'll adjourn the workshop and we'll see everybody at the executive session.